Okay, good evening all. It is April 25th and I'll call to order this member, this meeting of the Board of Selectmen. All of our select people are here this evening. It's an interesting night for us here because we have with us Greg Bendel and Kevin Kyra, our two newest elected members of the Board of Selectmen. So, our congratulations to you both for your success this weekend and welcome aboard to the team.
Thank you.
If I could ask everyone to stand up and join us, we're going to recite the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I'll begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would also like to take just a brief moment to acknowledge that every member of the board here, as well as Jeff and Beverly, are wearing an item of blue this evening, or a pin, to signify and pay tribute and honor to April being Autism Awareness Month. So, again, we try to bring some awareness to that and some recognition to that condition and hope that at some point, because of that awareness, we'll see some momentum built towards solving some of the problems that those individuals experience. We have Treasury warrants to approve, Treasury warrant 42, 42A, 43, and 43A. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion is made?
Seconded.
And seconded. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. We had an executive session at 6 o'clock for the purpose of discussing pending litigation. That is concluded. And so, our 7 o'clock appointment is the recognition of Wilmington Youth Hockey Peewee One. We will enjoy our Bantam One team in a few moments, I believe. I think they're out there enjoying another sport this spring. But, we, the Bantam One Peewee, I'm sorry, the Peewee One Team, Wilmington Youth Hockey, competed in and won in the 2015-2016 State Championship. No small task. So, I will, as the Chairman of this Board, simply state to you all, you fine young gentlemen and coaches and parents, how incredibly impressed we are, how proud we are of you all for your accomplishment. When you were out there playing against the other teams, you represented our community and you did so very, very, very admirably. And as I say, you young gentlemen, I know that I'm addressing at least a couple of ladies, so I apologize, this, all of you.
Don't forget the girl power.
Absolutely, Judy, I'm sorry. So, you know, I say that to you and I say congratulations, I say thank you for being great representatives of our great town. I ask you to continue to do so in all of the activities, whether it's hockey or other sports that you play going forward. And as you continue on through school, continue to understand that when you go out into other communities, you represent this great town as you've done so, so well. So, congratulations. And what I want to do is make sure I give the opportunity for the other members of this Board to express their appreciation as well. So, I'll start to my left with Ms. O'Connell.
Thank you. First of all, I just wanted to welcome everyone here tonight. When we walked in here, there was very few people and so, we were like, well, jeez, did they get the memo? And then, all of a sudden, when Rob invited you all in, this place just filled up magically. So, thank you very much to all of you for taking the time to be here. Obviously, you have very busy schedules and to try and fight traffic and get through your jobs and to get here on time and to get your kids to their practice schedules, we appreciate you joining us here tonight. I have to say to you, young men and women, congratulations on a job well done. You've brought a lot of pride to our town, lovingly known as 01887. You look fantastic in your jerseys and those champion hats are real sharp and you're looking real fine here and really looking like an exciting group of young talented people and we're thrilled to have you here tonight. Enjoy this, savor the moment, this is what you strive for. Obviously, you know the commitment, what it takes to be a hockey player. It's a passion in and of itself and it's a unique sport that it brings people and families together like no other sport, quite frankly. And I'm sure you've spent a lot of early mornings and late evenings in practices and you've traveled and you've played some real serious tough competition and you've risen to the top as the champions that you are and we're very proud to have you here tonight. Remember these moments, remember the friendships that you build together, these are the best times of your lives and so, really enjoy it. I want to compliment the coaches. Certainly, it's a labor of love for you, but it's no question that you sacrificed time with your own respective children and with your families to be on the ice with these kids and you're the role models that we need in athletics so that student athletes understand the importance of teamwork and to have the mental tenacity and toughness to get through tough times. And everyone can enjoy a victory, but it's how you come from behind and it's how you handle the loss or the mistake and how you rebound from that that really makes a difference in a child's life. So, thank you very much for the commitment and dedication that you have given to this team for the season and certainly, a lot of gratitude goes to you. So, hopefully, you young players will thank your coaches this evening for a job well done on their part. And certainly, in the audience, there's a lot of parents and family members that are here. It takes a village to get this done and you all deserve a tremendous amount of recognition. There's no question that a lot of the faces that I see are the faces that I see everywhere I go around town. And you've been supporting Wilmington and you've been supporting youth athletics in this town across all sports. And that goes to your credit as parents that you make the sacrifices. It's a very expensive sport, it's a very time-consuming sport, and it's a very rewarding sport. And these could, these kids could not do what they do without your support and I'm sure they, they love you to the moon and back, even though they may not be able to express it in quite the ways. But, I guarantee you in years to come, on their wedding day or at a major milestone, they'll be thanking you for times like this that you were in the room tonight. So, congratulations for all that you've done. Thank you.
And thank you, Judy. And if I may, Mr. McCoy, I wanted to interrupt. I got a high sign from the audience that, in the meantime, the entire Youth Bantam One Team is here. So, we were going to wait for you to come in, but apparently, you're here. So, that's good news. So, the Bantam One Team also had a season that culminated with the winning of the 2015-2016 Massachusetts Bantam State Championship. Again, a remarkable accomplishment. So, I was addressing comments to the Peewees a few moments ago and I want to just echo everything that I said to them, to you as well. Congratulations and my heartfelt and sincere thanks to you and we wish you well and as you go forward as well. So, I'm sorry, Judy, I wanted to interrupt as you were talking. I suspect you would rearticulate your comments to the Bantams as well.
Yes.
So, Mike, please, please go ahead.
Yeah, just to be quick, Selectman O'Connell basically said it all. I just want to congratulate the young men and women and this is a very tough task that you young folks accomplish, state champions. And once again, you've got to really thank your folks, you know, for supporting you, taking you out, doing what needs to get done. And just to sum it real quick, I remember being here on the Board for a few years and I know the high school was state champs. What you should have did, what they did, is they dyed their hair blonde and we came in wearing blonde wigs. What you guys should do, and I'll tell you what, if you win next year, dye it whatever color you want, red, guarantee I'll put a red wig on for you folks next year. All right? So, once again, all the best to all you young men and women, you make the town proud and that's what it is. It's a real strong community of loving this town and you've got to thank all your coaches. And I see Masardito, my next door neighbor in the back, you know, thank your coaches day in and day out. And once again, don't forget your parents. Your parents really make it happen for you kids and be respectful of everybody, especially listen to your folks. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. McCoy. Mr. Kyra?
Congratulations. Great season, outstanding performance that you guys achieved, state championship. Hockey in Wilmington is a great tradition and I can see by you guys and ladies and that you're going to be moving right up to the high school level and beyond and hopefully, when you become a pro, you will remember this day and you'll sign a puck for me because I want one of those. But, I'd like to recognize the parents and the coaches as well. Without their knowledge and support and help, you guys, want to give them a big thank you. Let me tell you how important they are in your development. But, once again, congratulations, great job.
Mr. Bendel?
Thank you. And obviously, a lot's been said already, but congratulations to both teams, young men, young women, and certainly, the coaches and the parents who put an awful lot of time in, long hours and certainly, a lot of time out of your busy schedules. It was well worth it, so congratulations on great seasons. You should be real proud of yourselves, we're really proud of you. And I know that a championship team isn't about one person or one individual, but tonight, I think it would be fitting if we recognized, I think there is a stud goalie in the audience whose birthday is today, so I want to wish Sam a happy birthday today, too. All right? So, congratulations, we're really proud of you guys and thank you all for being here.
Great. Do you want to say a few words?
I, I think it's all been said, but again, congratulations and it sounds like you really iced it.
Hey, very good. Very good. And on that note, so I guess what we're going to do is, we're going to ask, we'll start with the Peewee Squad here and Mr. Hull is going to call off some names and we're going to offer you a certificate. And when he calls off your name, come on up, see me, I'll give you a certificate, but stay up here because we're going to do a group photo once, once we're completed, all right? So, I should go up?
Yeah.
So, first, we have William Allworth. Michael Daniels. James Kokot, uh, let's see, I don't know this, Kokotis. Sorry about that. He made it easier for your brother, Peter Kokotis. Let's see, now, we have the coach, assistant coach, Daniel Ardito. Assistant coach, Mark Sedron. Assistant coach, Mark Galucci. Assistant coach, David Glinner. Assistant coach, Jim McCarron. Assistant coach, Eric Packer. Assistant coach, James Peterson. And head coach of the Wilmington Youth Hockey Peewee One Team, state champions, Robert Peterson.
All right, so, you guys want to get up and sort of, all right. Who's organizing those group photos? So, what do you have, guys, and little guys in front, sort of, you play challenge the guys in front. We should get the numbers. Coach, you see, right? There's more of us. That was so much fun, let's do it again. So, our Bantam Squad also won state championships, that's remarkable, think about that achievement. Two teams, both state championships in the same year. It bodes very well for the future of hockey in this town. Looking forward to many more years of hopefully having you guys back here again. It's a lot of work, all right, that's awesome stuff. So, this is for the Bantam Squad.
The Bantam Squad, first on deck, Ryan Barrett. Next is David Basil. And one of the coaches from the state championship team, Chip Bruce. Also coaching the state championship, Pat Nally.
That's a, that's a fun way to start off any meeting. Thanks go to all of you. We wish you great success in future years. Now, I want to encourage everyone to stay and participate in local civics. There's so much you can learn about how local government works. However, on the outside chance that perhaps you may not want to stay, now would be the time. I don't know about you folks, but there are moments as a, as a member of this Board that, you know, sometimes you go, oh, boy, this, this can be a tough gig at times, but there are these moments that make it all worthwhile. It's just, it's so rewarding and fulfilling to be able to do that with these gentlemen and ladies.
Absolutely. I think it also didn't want to make a political statement by any means, but I think it accentuates the overwhelming need that we can, need to continue to pursue our rink endeavor. You know, when you, when you see stuff like this and you see the two state championships for the high school and all the recognition, it's been annual that we've had a hockey team in here, one or two at least, that just reminds me of the fact that we need to keep pursuing that endeavor which we're doing.
Yeah, indeed, thank you, Judy, for bringing it up. And I, you know, I, whether you say it now or even before, it's poignant and it's worth restating, so I appreciate you bringing it up, indeed. So, we'll move on here to our 7:30 scheduled appointment, which is the discussion and assignment of motions for our annual town meeting, which is coming this Saturday. So, Jeff, I'll turn it over to you to, to go through the articles and assign who will be reading them into the, at town meeting.
Mr. Chairman, this memorandum just seeks to establish a recommended listing of assignment of articles. Certainly, if members would like to make changes, this would be the time to do that. So, with regard to the first motion, which is to the moderator to dispense with further reading of the warrant, that would be Michael Shampoo. Article two, which is to hear reports, Michael McCoy. Article three, which is the transfer or borrowing to pay for unpaid bills, Judy O'Connell. Article four, which is the authorization of the treasurer collector to enter into banking agreements, would be one of our new selectmen.
Do we want to assign that at this evening or?
If either of you are interested in signing on to that one.
It's fine by me.
Okay, so, selectmen, we will, that will be Selectman Bendel. The next one is the omnibus budget, which is Finance Chair Theresa Meganelli. Article six is the start of the capital projects, the first being to authorize a purchase of police cruisers. With Selectman Kyra, if you're so interested, I'll put you in there.
Let's make it easier on you, Jeff, would you just alternate every other at this point unless you guys have an objection?
Back and forth between Kyra and Bendel, Kyra and Bendel, unless there's objections.
Sure. Okay, so, beyond that, if, if you want, Mr. Chair, I can go through the rest of the articles or?
Uh, yeah.
Article six B would be authorize a purchase of fire command vehicle, Selectman Shampoo. Article six C, authorization of fire ambulance, Selectman McCoy. Article six D, authorize the purchase of fire pumper, Selectman O'Connell. Article six E, to authorize purchase of a heavy-duty dump truck, Selectman Bendel. Article six F is the authorization of a front-end loader. That would be Selectman Kyra. Article six G, authorize the purchase of a pavement roller and trailer, Selectman Shampoo. Article six H, purchase a school transport van, Selectman McCoy. Article seven, to authorize the purchase of techno, technology improvements, would be Selectman O'Connell. Article eight, to authorize the purchase of electronic control weapons, Selectman Bendel. Article nine, authorize the purchase of portable radios for the fire department, Selectman Kyra. Article 10, to authorize purchase of intersection, the appropriation for an intersection master plan, Selectman Shampoo. Eleven, authorize the appropriation for engineering services, Selectman McCoy. Article 12, to authorize appropriation for sewer pump station, Selectman O'Connell. Article 13, to authorize north intermediate roof replacement, Selectman Bendel. Article 12, to authorize Boutwell School Roof Replacement, Selectman Kyra.
It's 14?
14, yeah. I'm sorry, article 14. Article 15, to authorize the purchase of Fundations ELA program will be a school committee member, as will be Articles 16, the purchase of the Lucy Culkins ELA program. Article 17, purchase of social emotional curriculum again, school committee. Article 18, to authorize the purchase of a voice-over IP phone system, school committee. Article 19, to authorize the purchase of a computer, of computer switches for the schools, again, school committee. Article 20, to authorize funding for the OPEB trust fund, Selectman Shampoo. Article 21, to authorize the funding for capital stabilization fund, Selectman McCoy. Article 22, to authorize funding for the employee retirement benefits stabilization fund, that would be Selectman O'Connell. Article 23, to authorize funding for the middlesex retirement system, Selectman Bendel. Article 24, authorization, authorize the transfer from various accounts for FY16, Selectman Kyra. Article 25, to authorize funds for the July 4th celebration, Selectman Shampoo. Article 26, to authorize funds for Veterans and Memorial Day, Selectman McCoy. Article 27, to authorize funds for the VFW and American Legion leases, Selectman O'Connell. Article 28, to authorize funds for revolving accounts, Selectman Bendel. Article 29, to authorize funds for the public rink enterprise, Selectman Kyra. Article 30, to amend zoning bylaw, section 4.1.13, Selectman Shampoo. Article 31, to authorize participation in the MWRA Assistance Program, Selectman McCoy. Article 32, to authorize, Selectman, to acquire restrictions with regard to affordable housing, this would be Selectman O'Connell. Article 33, to amend zoning bylaws, section 3.1.3.5.1.1, Planning Board. Article 34, to amend the inhabitant bylaws, section 51, Planning Board. Article 35, to amend the zoning bylaw, section 6.2, Planning Board. Article 36, to amend the zoning bylaws, section 1.3, Planning Board. Article 37, to amend the zoning bylaw, section 3.5.15 and 3.6.3, Planning Board. board. Article thirty-eight, to amend the zoning bylaws to create a neighborhood mixed-use district, planning board. Article thirty-nine, to amend the zoning bylaws, section 3.9 and 3.5.2, planning board. Article forty, to amend the inhabitant bylaws, chapter five, section 27, 28, and 29, Selectman Bendel. And Article forty-one, to amend the inhabitant bylaws, chapter four, section one, Selectman Kyra.
Okay. Sounds like there's no objections to anyone with any of those assignments, so we can look forward to having those. And each motion, as it's read, will be provided to the members for reading at the town meeting. Is that correct?
Yes. Each member of the board will receive a package this weekend that will contain the, the motion book and other supporting documentation.
Thank you. So, we are continuing to move on, and that brings us to our communications line item. So, I will continue to hand it over to you, Jeff.
This next item is a memorandum from me to the police chief regarding the firearms, follow-up on the approval or the endorsement of the firearms range. At their meeting on Monday, April 11th, 2016, the Board of Selectmen voted to endorse the proposal to reestablish a firearms range in a new location from the area previously used for the firearms training on Abigail Island. The board's endorsement is based upon the terms of use for the firearms range that have been established in your special order dated March 30, 2016, copy attached. Effective with their vote, your special order is operational. As noted in my April 8, 2016 memorandum to the Board of Selectmen, material changes in the special order but will require approval by the town manager and the consent of the Board of Selectmen. Please keep me apprised of the dates when training is scheduled at the range. You should plan to provide an update to the Board of Selectmen on the firearms training program at the range next year. Once the range is fully constructed and available for use, the update will be scheduled for approximately one year from that date. Next is a memo from me to the board regarding the Kinder Morgan announcement. I'm sure probably most everyone is aware of this by now, but Kinder Morgan announced late last week that they are suspending their efforts to establish the Northeast Energy Direct Pipeline, which, as you recall, runs from Pennsylvania up through New York into New England and then up to Canada. The section that affected, was slated to affect Wilmington, was the Linfield Line running from Drakett down through Wilmington out to Linfield and Peabody. I think this is certainly good news. I would just sound a note of caution that it, the application has been suspended and not withdrawn, so we will certainly keep our eye on the FERC website and, and hope that this is the end of this project.
If I may interject there, and I certainly afford the opportunity for anyone else to do so as well, I view this, and I know and I appreciate your cautious optimism, and I think that's prudent, given the circumstances where they withdrew but, or with, where they didn't fully cancel their, their proposal. That all being said, I really think this is a testament to what grassroots organization can accomplish when they put their heads together. I think, I certainly want to pay tribute to and give thanks to our town engineer, Paula Looney, for being very, very close to the process and keeping us at the, you know, the elected side informed and as knowledgeable as we were, as is possible. But I, I really view this as a tremendous win, not just for Wilmington, but also for Massachusetts and for the, for the region. I think this will afford the, the Commonwealth and the region the opportunity to pursue more aggressively other avenues for renewable energy, whether that be solar or wind or, or hydro from Canada. But irrespective of what someone's position is on gas, I think it's, it's worthwhile to recognize that a number of organizations and towns and municipalities assembled, organized, and articulated their opposition in general to what, what Kinder Morgan was proposing. And while Kinder Morgan cites that the reason that they are withdrawing is because they didn't have customers for the gas, I think it's also fairly likely to assume and to presume that it is in, due in large course because of the pressure that they were receiving from, from municipalities as well as elected officials all the way up into, into Washington. So, kudos to everyone that has been involved in this, of every civil argument and process, but that bore out the fruits of their labor, of our labor. So, I'm, I'm very hopeful that this will open up avenues for, for other, other means of, of fuel for the, for the region in the future. But that's my two cents on that subject. I certainly want to open it up.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just say real quick, there's two words that you need to really focus on: stay tuned. This is not the end of this. Obviously, they did it for economic reasons, and I can guarantee you, right after the presidential elections, you're probably going to see something else. Depends on who gets elected on how this thing goes, too. So, I'd just say, stay tuned. We all thought New England Transrail was going to go away. Guess what? It's back again. So, there's no difference between the two relative to New England Transrail. I think we want less contamination, not more contamination, but that's a story for another day.
The Spectra Program project, or project is still on the radar screen. It doesn't affect us. My understanding is it doesn't affect Wilmington, but it still would be impactful on the Commonwealth. So, I, I know that that, that project is still afoot, so we'll, as, as you say, we'll stay tuned for that. Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Next is correspondence from Rick Collin from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, noting he's pleased to announce a series of statewide meetings designed to seek public feedback on the draft 2017 to 21 capital investment plan. This is the Commonwealth Capital Improvement Plan to address roads, bridges, and various infrastructure throughout the state. I would just note that Wilmington, the only item that is listed on the plan that has any consequence to Wilmington, there are apparently some upgrades proposed to the RMV in Wilmington. Otherwise, there's nothing, nothing slated directly involving Wilmington. The hearing that is, or public hearing that is closest to Wilmington is scheduled for Wednesday, May 11th at 6:00 PM in Andover at the Public Safety Center, 32 North Main Street. Next is a memo from me to the board regarding the appointment to the Board of Appeals, and I would just note that you'll recall Charlie Boyle, his term is coming up for, due to expire. He had expressed interest in the form of an email sent out that he was not seeking reappointment. He more recently has suggested that he would be willing to continue to serve in, in part because of pending case before the Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. I want to also advise the board that I received direct communication in the form of an email from Mr. Boyle earlier today, and it effectively says what Jeff just told us, that he had previously indicated his interest in not being reappointed, but because of the, the case that had begun while he was on the board and is not yet completed, he feels it appropriate and applicable, and frankly, fair to the applicant, that he maintain a presence on the board until that case is heard to its conclusion. And so, he was asking respectfully for us to rescind his previous letter regarding his reappointment and ask that we reappoint him to the board so he can fulfill those obligations regarding that, that pending case. He would accept the reappointment with the understanding that at some future date upon the conclusion of that specific case, it is expected that he would submit a letter of resignation because he does intend to no longer seek a, a permanent seat on the Board of Appeals. Again, his intent is to hear this case to its conclusion and then vacate the seat, at which time we would then take up the issue of appointing his replacement. So, Jeff, is it appropriate that, that I would ask for a motion to, to approve that reappointment this evening?
Well, I think the step perhaps would be to vote to rescind his, actually, I guess at this point, I think there's no vote necessary, so I think if, if the board is so inclined to rescind his earlier letter, seeking not to be reappointed, there's really no action to be taken, and then next week, next time the board meets, if the board is so inclined, you could vote to reappoint him at that time.
And that's effectively the question. So, it's at our next meeting when, when we would be doing these appointments. So, I don't know that action is specifically necessary this evening. It was more an FYI to the board on those communications. So, you know, unless there's objection, I think we would have just accepted Mr. Boyle's rescinding of his letter of resignation.
Just to be clear, for those members who haven't seen the email, this, the Tresca case, you may recall is a, has been going on for a number of months. I think the expectation was that the case would be, the hearing would be closed at the April meeting, and there was additional information that was apparently required, so that hearing has been continued to the June meeting.
Any objections? I see none, so we'll proceed with that. Thank you.
Next is memorandum to the Board of Selectmen regarding the selectmen's appointments and reappointments. There is, again, no action required this evening. This is just to inform the board of the appointments and reappointments that will be coming up. So, just for the record, Animal Control Officer, one-year term to expire 2017, Christopher Sullivan. As previously noted, Board of Appeals, five-year term to expire 2021, Charles Boyle. Board of Registars, three-year term to expire 2019, Priscilla Ward. Cable TV Advisory Task Force, Kendra Amaral, George Breslin. Neil Ellis, actually, is currently a member. These appointments are indefinite. Sean Neville and Kendra Rosette. Council for the Arts, two-year term to expire 2018, Louise Anderson, Ruth Camber, Jane Crane, and Stefan Greco. Council for the Arts Advisory Board, one-year term to expire 2017, Jean Chang. Fence Viewers, one-year term to expire June 30, 2017, Paula Looney and John Spalding. Town Council, one-year term to expire June 30, 2017, Deutsch Williams, Brooks, Durensis, and Holland. And then Constables, one-year term to expire 2017, Jason Costa, Alan Hunter, Charles Rooney Jr., John Bridges Jr., Paul Bruce Jr., Ronald D. Gigorio Jr., Dennis Otis, William Pepaselli, John Rowan, and Anthony Seiya. Just note, Christopher Sullivan, with respect to that constable, only in conjunction with duties for animal control officer. Next is our appointments for positions that require approval by the board. This would be First Commission on Disabilities, three-year term to expire 2019, Frank Boddy and Joseph P. Francesca, Francesse Jr. Commission on Disabilities, term to expire 2018. We actually have a vacancy for that position. Historical Commission, three-year term to expire 2019, Steve, Stephen Laurinson and Bonnie Smith. Permanent Building Committee, three-year term to expire 2019, Joseph Perella Jr.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just ask a question, and I don't mean to spot the, the manager, but just a, just an innocent inquiry. How often does the Commission on Disabilities meet, and are there any, I don't recall, like, ever really receiving, like, any sort of memo updates or anything? Can you, can you expand on that? Maybe if not now, at some future meeting as to, you know, what that involves?
The, the commission has not met recently for, I would say, quite some time. In the past, they have met to, if there are issues involving access, whether it's to public buildings or other buildings. Sometimes, I know in the past, there have been inquiries made by individuals who may be looking for assistance in terms of gaining access, and so, the board, the commission has met on those purposes, but they have not met for quite some time.
Okay. Like I said, I just, just an innocent inquiry. I just wanted to know what that entailed, but thank you.
Next is a letter requesting to be reappointed. This is from Ronald D. Gigorio, and it reads as follows: Dear Board of Selectmen, please reappoint me as a constable of Wilmington. I have been a constable in Wilmington since 1992 and would appreciate your approval of the reappointment. I retired as a Superior Court Officer for Middlesex Superior Court after 28 years. I still live at Levin Merritt Road, Burlington, and have for 43 years. I will abide by your request not to solicit clients in Wilmington, but have authority to serve civil process for my clients. I am still a constable for Woburn, Medford, and Cambridge, as well as Wilmington, and have an active bond for each city and town. My bond is good until August of 2016 for Wilmington, at which time it will be renewed, and I will send it to the clerk's office to be filed. I've also completed a training program on the conflict of interest law. Thank you for your consideration on this reappointment.
So, we'll be taking these up at our next meeting? Is that correct?
Yes. Next is a letter from me to James Trombley. This is regarding the recommendation for the Republican Town Committee. Just briefly, it notes, "I am writing to you on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and in compliance with MGL Chapter 51, Section 15, as it pertains to the appointment of members to the Board of Registars. Please accept this letter as an official notification from the Board of Selectmen that the term of Priscilla Ward, a member of the Board of Registars representing the Republican Party, will expire on April 30, 2016. Mrs. Ward has indicated that she is interested in the reappointment," it then goes on to cite the provision of law. This was actually issued in Feb, on February 26th of this year. We have not received a response to that to this point. Next, we have a, a letter from Michael Sweeney from the Massachusetts State Lottery Commission. And this is with regard to providing or offering a Kino monitor to the existing Kino-to-go agents, and specifically, in the case of Wilmington, it's being offered to Richdales at 357 Middlesex Ave in Wilmington. So, as I understand it, when, when the game is, when people purchase the Kino tickets with this monitor, they would be able to see the numbers appear on some kind of a flat screen or, or board. The police chief, Michael Begonas, notes in a memo dated April 22nd, "Upon completing a review, the Wilmington Police Department recommends approval of a Kino monitor to the existing Kino-to-go located at Richdale 357 Middlesex Ave." The way this works is that the Board of Selectmen has 21 days from receipt of this correspondence, which was April 15th, to voice any objections. In the absence of any action or, or response taken by the board, then the monitor would be issued.
So, it doesn't require So it doesn't require a vote of approval, but if there was objection or a majority of us who wanted to disapprove, that would be the action?
That's right.
I see no action. And we are at Board to Consider items. This first one, oh, go ahead, Jeff, I'm sorry.
It's on the Board to Consider. There's a request from Police Chief Mike Begonis to use Rotary Park on August 2nd to conduct the National Night Out. The event, as you know, has been a big success for a number of years now. It's over at Rotary Park. The event this year will include the Touch a Truck exhibit, canine demonstration, dunk tank, kids movie, and will provide crime prevention information. It's really a good night out for families and try to accent the importance of being mindful of what's going on in our neighborhoods.
Do we have a recommendation from the Police Department on this one?
Recommend approval.
I would accept a motion.
So moved to grant the request.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Look forward to it, Chief. Thank you.
Next is a request from Tina Stewart, Library Director, to use the town common parking lot, actually, the Swain School parking lot, for a shredder that's called Town Shredding Day. So this has been done the last couple of years over in the lower lot of the library. She's requesting use of the Swain parking lot would be scheduled for September 24th. That's a Saturday, 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, and they'll have a couple of shredders out there, and residents who are looking to get rid of sensitive documents would be able to avail themselves of that opportunity.
Music to my ears. Are there any objections or any concerns about the time of the date?
There's been no conflicts with the schools or any other issues.
So I would accept a motion.
Moved to grant the request as presented.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? I see none? All in favor? Unanimous. Great. Looking forward to that as well. God knows I got shredding to do. Brings us to public comments. If there is anyone that would wish to offer any observations, don't all jump up. Very good. New business in committee reports. I will start, again, down to my left. Judy, if you have anything to offer here?
Sure. First of all, just wanted to reiterate what you said at the beginning of the meeting. This is obviously our second meeting in the month of April, which is Autism Awareness Month, so I'd also like to just express appreciation for this board and for Bev and Jeff for wearing blue, and also, once again, just compliment the town overall for lighting up the common blue, and I think it really is fitting and appropriate, and I'm glad, I don't want to take away from the autism piece, but just that in general, we're doing that as a town on different months for different reasons. I think that's a really nice touch, so I wanted to say that publicly. I also wanted to take this opportunity to welcome and congratulate Selectman Bendel and Selectman Kyra to our team here on the Board of Selectmen. Obviously, you both came out as the winners, and you both ran exceptional campaigns, and it was an honor to watch that from a distance, and I just wanted to congratulate you, and I want to congratulate all the candidates that were elected and reelected, and just any candidate that had the courage to put their name on the ballot. I think that deserves recognition. So just wanted to welcome you both very sincerely to the board and as a member, whatever I can do to help you as a business colleague and a fellow resident on the town board here. Don't hesitate to contact me, and help you in any way that I can. So once again, welcome and congratulations on your respective wins. Also, too, just wanted to, I know important dates are coming up, and the manager will speak to it, but obviously, next weekend is our annual town meeting. There's a lot of business to conduct as a community, and I hope that as many people as possible will take the time to come out and be part of that process. So just wanted to close with that, and once again, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, Judy said it all. However, I'd like to appreciate and send my sincere thanks to you, Mr. Chairman, allowing Autism Month to be acknowledged here at the Board of Selectmen. That's something very dear to my heart, because I do have a son who's autistic. And just once again, I want to congratulate the two new selectmen, Mr. Bendel and Mr. Kyra. Looking forward to working with you two gentlemen on behalf of the town. I might say, not from a distance, probably from a longer distance, the only sitting selectman, former selectman, not to support anybody in this election, but I hope nobody holds that against me at all. Looking forward to working with everybody, and that's a good sign. Thank you.
Mr. Bendel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate your kind words at the beginning of the meeting, and thank you to my colleagues for your kind words as well. I'd also like to congratulate Mr. Kyra. I want to thank the residents for giving me this opportunity. I look forward to learning and working on their behalf, and I look forward to working with all the members of the board, so thank you for your kind words. I just want to add quickly that I had good fortune to be at the 5K race, put on the Bible of the Wow organization yesterday. It was a great event, it was well-attended, it was well-organized, so I thank you to those who organized, and my congratulations to those who participated. It was a terrific event, obviously for a really good cause, so I'm happy to be there. Thank you.
Mr. Kyra?
I too want to thank the board for their kind words. I want to congratulate Greg, and also recognize the efforts of Tom Miller and Joe Lovino, who worked hard on their campaigns as well. I want to thank the residents for their support, and although it was a low turnout, I want to thank those voters who came out and commend them for fulfilling their obligation to the community of Wilmington. I look forward to serving the board, and I'll work my best. Thank you.
I too, I'll just re-echo or restate welcome. We're awfully glad to have you here. We're looking forward to building a working relationship with you, and I know it's going to be productive for the benefit of the entire town. So thank you, guys, for stepping up and for your volunteerism. Thank the voters for coming out on Saturday. Mr. Kyra just mentioned that it wasn't the best of percentages in terms of turnouts, but nevertheless, strong of 2,000 people saw fit to carve out a few moments and come perform their civic duties, and so I compliment all of you for doing so. Want to also state that it was, gosh, I think last week, I forget the date. Mr. McCoy, when was the Little League Parade? It was two weeks ago?
It was last Saturday.
It was, okay. That was a great day. I shared with Mr. McCoy and past Selectmen Semaglia, we enjoyed the opening day of Wilmington Little League, and it's always a great tradition, so I congratulate all of those young men and women and the coaches, and look forward to, obviously, a great season for all of them. I know Jeff is going to go through the important dates in just a few moments, but I want to really, I want to encourage, that's the right word to use, I want to encourage all members of our community to carve out some time to come participate in the purest form of local government, and that is the town meeting. It's government by the people and for the people, and you are the people. So, you know, inasmuch as you elect us to be here as your representatives and to guide the overall direction and set policy, at the end of the day, it's you, the residents in the community, who approve or don't approve of the overall operations and budgeting and finances. So I encourage everyone to carve out some time. You don't have to spend the entire day, but come down and participate in the process. And as Jeff will indicate, it starts at 10:30 promptly on Saturday, so we'll look forward to filling up the auditorium at the high school. Thank you. Mr. Hall?
Important dates, April 27th is a brush drop-off at the Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Then again, on April 30th, a brush drop-off, Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. As was noted, April 30th is next Saturday, this coming Saturday, the annual town meeting at the high school begins at 10:30. Then, curbside collection of yard waste extends from May 2nd to May 6th. May 2nd is the Welcome to Wilmington New Resident Reception at the library, beginning at 6:30 PM. I would also note, it's not on here, but I just wanted to make note of the fact that the Facilities Master Plan Committee will be meeting at 6 o'clock on May 5th in Room 9 here at the town hall. Also, another brush drop-off, May 4th, Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Board of Selectmen's next meeting is May 9th here at the town hall, Room 9, 7:00 PM. May 13th is the Good Guy Award Dinner. May 7th is another brush drop-off, Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And then, May 14th is the Household Hazardous Waste Day, West Intermediate School Parking Lot, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Unless there's anything else, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, and good night.